Good morning, and we will call the September 2nd, 2025 City Council Meeting to Order. And I'm going to ask Councilmember Frank McMean if he would lead us in an airification and pledge. If you would, please stand.
That's right. Heavenly Father, we're so thankful for a beautiful day. We thank you for a country where we enjoy so many blessings. We ask that you look over our meeting and give us wisdom. Bless our city. In your son's name we pray.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Right, I agree. Roll call, and I guess you see that all council members are present. And on approval of the minutes from the August 5th, 2025 City Council Meeting, those minutes were emailed out to you all. There are no additions or corrections. They will stand approved as read. And next up, we have Proclamations and Recognizations. We'll start with our swearing in of our Mayor's Youth Council. So our new class of youth council would come up and line up right up here. All right, we've got a great youth council this year to be joining our already fantastic youth council. These are all juniors. And so I'm going to call them out one by one so you can see who they are. Justin Ariaga with Madison Academic, Zoe Bailey with Madison Academic, Caroline Brant, University School of Jackson, Josie Carney with University School of Jackson, Emmy Hammond, University School of Jackson, Jesse Haynes, JCM Early College High, Sam Hines, University School of Jackson, Anna Lutz, Southside High School, Jeremiah McGill, Madison Academic, Shayla Nguyen, Southside, Dia Patel, University School of Jackson, Katie Peachin, JCM Early College High, Camia Robinson, Camaya Robinson, JCM Early College High, Janiya Thaxton, Liberty Tech High School, Neela K. Wilson, Trinity Christian Academy, sorry, and Nicole Yang, Jackson. All right, I'm going to ask you all to raise your right hand, say aye, and say your name.
Aye.
And then repeat after me. Do solemnly swear that I will perform and discharge the duties placed upon me as a member of the Mayor's Youth Council, fairly and honestly, and to the best of my skill and ability. Let's welcome them all to the Mayor's Youth Council this year. Y'all can have a seat. They're going to stick around and see how business is conducted. So y'all behave today, okay?
Mayor, if you would, would you let the proud parents stand so we can see them?
Any parents here, our youth council members? Yes. All right. Next up, we have a presentation about Economic Injury Disaster Loans Presentation from SBA.
Good morning, Mayor, council members, audience. My name is DJ Chikala. I am a public affairs specialist with the SBA's Disaster Recovery Team. And I should add, it's Recovery and Resiliency is the full title of our group, which will come into play. I also spent a good majority of my career as a spokesperson for a public school district. And I know following any form of presentation involving young, happy students is always tough, so I know the bar is high. I will tell you, I will not exceed it. Let's see. So SBA Recovery is an arm of the Small Business Administration that a lot of people, I find, since joining the agency, are not aware of. We actually do come in and assist with businesses and agricultural cooperatives and private nonprofits recovering after a disaster. The reason for my presentation today is there were storms in April, 2nd through the 24th, that impacted this area. And Madison County, as you see from this presentation, I won't read off all the counties, but Madison is eligible for economic injury disaster loans. The economic disaster injury loans are vital because, as we know, and I know from shopping in downtown Jackson the last few weeks of living here, are just vital in the lifeblood of the community. The owners are amazing that I've been able to meet during my time here. These loans, because there's the possibility in Madison County that some businesses since April have seen a decline in their working capital, you know, people in perhaps McNary that normally come into Jackson to shop because of what happened, might not be coming in and spending money. The economic injury disaster loans give them the working capital they need to keep the lights on, keep inventory, pay their staff. And the one thing that I can share is that the maximum amount for an economic injury disaster loan is $2 million. So the thing that I like to emphasize is applying is crucial. It doesn't have, obviously, it's what you're eligible for, but applying can give businesses the money they need to stay afloat while an area recovers from a disaster. They're low interest, and there's 0% interest and no payments for 12 months during that time. And a lot of times we'll hear, well, I have insurance coming. Well, when that insurance comes, if you've qualified for our loan, you can pay off the loan without penalty. So it can get people back on their feet quicker. There are loan and insurance requirements that our experts, I am here to present the information, but we have a great team that works with individuals when they call to start the process for applying. So they would walk them through all these pieces of it. Let's see, I got a path to that. So I did touch upon the maximum amount. The current low fixed rate for businesses is 4%, and it's just under that at 3.625 for nonprofit organizations. And as I previously mentioned, there's no monthly payments or interest during that first year. Let's see, skip that part. The reason I want to just add before I go into some concluding information is any county, as you've been seeing in Tennessee, SBA, as well as our partner organizations like FEMA have been in the area in recent years multiple times, is never wish it upon any area to be a primary county. But if, in fact, Madison or one of the contiguous counties right now were to be named a primary because the disaster was more central to their area, we do offer physical disaster loans as well as loans that help homeowners and renters be able to get back cars, the interior type items to their. The physical disaster loans, however, for that a business or a homeowner could be eligible for, then makes them qualify for, and we are finding more and more people aren't aware of this, is mitigation and preparedness. So in planning ahead, if there were an incidence in which the businesses and homeowners in this county are qualified for the physical disaster loans, and I have some information I can email and leave behind, mitigation, up to 20% that someone qualifies for for a physical disaster loan, they can get mitigation funding, which will allow them to prepare their physical structure and their property for, to be better and more resilient, as I led in with, resilient for any future issues that could arise. So that is a piece I want to at least leave you thinking with so that individuals can be prepared to take that step if the need arises. Another thing that people aren't aware of, that we do offer a variety of resource partners in the area. You might be most familiar with the SBDC, the development. So when I was out shopping this weekend, all the businesses seemed to know about SBA's ability to help support businesses outside of disasters. And the big one I can leave with is if there are any businesses that still have not looked at whether or not they want to apply for economic injury disaster loans for this current declaration from the April storms, it's as simple as going to sba.gov/disaster or calling our 800 number. We just strongly encourage that if someone feels that they are qualified, that they do look into this option because you do want to keep what is a terrific downtown and surrounding businesses viable. And with that, if anyone had any questions, I kept it short.
Any questions? Thank you so much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right, next up, we have invitation for public comment. We have several that have signed up. Mind you all, that is for items on the agenda, and the no more than three minutes for your opportunity to be heard by council. And so we'll start with John Shinholzer.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Yeah, either one of those where the microphone is. Yes, sir.
You get to that item, is that something you discuss then? You can give pro and times or do I do it on?
It's all right here, sir.
Thank you. For 12 hours, I just found out about the meeting on Friday. I'm John Shinholzer. I'm the advocacy director for the American Veterans for Kratom Safe. I'm also a United States Marine Corps veteran and Kratom consumer. And, you know, one of my jobs is trying to educate people about Kratom, you know, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And we see these popping up all across, you know, the country. People want to ban Kratom. And what they want to ban is usually adulterated product or more dangerous product, an illegal product. But the natural Kratom plant itself has already been proven to be very safe. The FDA, they would have banned it back in 2016 if they could, but they couldn't because we proved and demonstrated that it passed the Congressional 1994 Act to complete an eight-factor analysis test. When Kratom was, when, you know, remember the Oxycontin epidemic? When they whacked that product for the consumers, a whole lot of pain patients, they didn't know what to do. A third of those pain patients were legit, and they found Kratom. And Kratom gave people their life back, and it saved a lot of lives. But since then, you know, it does, it's a problem for addicts. I've been recovering myself. I just celebrated 43 years clean and sober last month, and I'm very active in the 12-step community. Couple of years ago, I participated in the John Hopkins Human Clinical Trial on, you know, can you safely take Kratom for your ailment and not ruin your life, which I clearly demonstrated. But since then, what I've discovered that there's so much, it's such a great failsafe product for responsible adult consumers. It's not the adult that's abusing this. People got to remember, when it comes to addiction, that's a mental illness. And when you look at other substances that are abused, such as, you know, alcohol, meth crack, it's always an underlying mental illness. So I got some, what I want to do is ask you to pause the resolution you're asking. Take the time out to get educated more about the plant, the natural pure plant product, understand it better before you just indiscriminately throw the baby out with the bathwater. Health and Human Services and the FDA, they just announced that they want to ban a terrible product that comes from a alpoid of Kratom, 708s. We want it banned too, but they made it clear they're not messing with the pure Kratom plant products, the natural leaf products. The natural product is proven safe and very appropriate for adult use. These other products are terrible. Our vape stores coast to coast, these tobacco shops, the vapes, full of dangerous get high products. I don't like them, don't want them in my community, and we're cleaning them up in our community back in Virginia. And I hope you do the same here. But the natural Kratom products are clearly proven safe. And I'm going to leave you with some information, and I'm asking you, just pause that request till you get.
Thank you, Mr. Shinholzer.
And we'll do that for you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mayor, I have some questions. Should I do it now? Should I wait till it comes up on the agenda?
You have some questions for him now, or questions about?
It's for him, either place, about this Kratom.
Yeah, that's just waiting it on the agenda.
All right.
Calling back up.
You're not going anywhere, right?
No, I'll wait right here.
Okay, yeah, wait.
I'll sit here through this.
All right, wait for me.
Can I leave these with you now?
We can do it. You can pass them out when we come up, or?
Let me give it to you now, and I'll hang out. I've got a special one for the nation, and they need to put it down. This is what FDA Regulatory Pro-Call Act, Kratom.
We'll go through all that in a second. We got to go.
This is banning all.
All right, thanks, sir.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Joel McAlexander.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Council members. My daughter asked me to come and make a little presentation today. She's married to Colin Miller, who owns this piece of property. My grandchildren back there also. I was partners with Colin's father 25 years ago when we built this section of Van Drive. We ended up doing some swapping. He ended up with this parcel, and I built some shopping centers on the other side. So I've been kind of not involved in this for a long time. But in preparation for this meeting, I decided to take a trip down Van Drive, and from Highland to where Gary Taylor's building.
Collins 3.
Collins 3, I guess is what, yeah. There's four miles. This is the only piece of property in that four miles that's not zone commercial. I was, in fact, it's only one of three parcels that it's not built on. The other two parcels are the corners of the Country Club. Going in the Country Club, I understand they were in here about two or three years ago and got their two corners zone commercial, yet they're opposed to this one for some reason. I don't quite understand that. The purpose of this meeting is just to decide whether this is appropriate zone for this piece of property. I know there's a lot of other questions floating around. If it's approved, it'll go to the, back to the developer to come up with a site plan. It'll be presented before the Planning Commission, and then that will address all these other issues, the drainage study, the traffic study, the parking layout, street lights, the access to the property, any landscaping buffer zones. So all of that should be addressed at the next public meeting if this is approved. And, you know, just for those reasons, I'd ask that y'all seriously consider rezoning this. Ask the request. Appreciate you.
Thank you, Joel.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Colin Miller.
Good morning, Mayor, Council.
Good morning.
I'm here today to speak, like Joel said, for the rezoning of this property. The, in our opinion, the best use for this property is the commercial. The other option is duplexes, which if this doesn't get zoned, that's what we will be building, is duplexes on this property. My opinion, that's the worst thing for the area. And as Joel said, that this is the only property not zone commercial. And if you drive them down Van, they are steadily buying old buildings, knocking the buildings down, building new buildings. And so, you know, this says there's a need for more property on Van Drive. Right now, we're paying $750 a year in city property taxes. We've estimated to be over $250,000 to $260,000 in property taxes if this is built out to be commercial. I hope y'all, seeing your heart, vote what's best for the city. And with that, just please vote yes. Thank you.
Sir, you said that duplexes are the worst purpose of the property. Why?
I think it actually would probably hurt the value more than the commercial will. It hurt the property values, the surrounding property values, in my opinion. Just on, our idea is to build them, and, you know, you got to rent them. Just rental, over time goes down.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Lemmy McNary.
Mr. Baker, go ahead. I'll pass.
Okay.
I won't be able to get through without coughing.
All right, next up, we have Todd Seroki.
Morning, Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council.
Morning.
Todd Seroki, I live at Eighth Barrett Place. Appreciate your time here today. You know, I'm not here to disparage anybody, really not. I think everyone in the council knows what happened. We tried to engage the developers. They backed out on a handshake.
Scrub towards the microphone.
They backed out on a handshake deal that they represented the council at the last meeting that we had reached. I've got that signed deal from the Country Club in my binder here. But they backed out of it after they got this approved on the first reading last time. I think the developers' own words speak volumes for themselves. So Mr. Miller stood up, and I think Mr. Holman, I've heard these words come out of Mr. Holman's mouth, I'm not sure if it was in front of the council or not. But Mr. Miller described at the last City Council meeting to describe the alternative to commercial development as, we don't want to be slum lords, but that's the alternative. Those are interesting words chosen by Mr. Miller. I've heard the same words out of Mr. Holman's mouth, slum lords. I know a lot of owners of affordable housing, affordable renting housing, that are not slum lords, that are great landlords. They appreciate their tenants, they're good to their tenants, they take care of their property. But they claim they're going to build and maintain a slum over there if you don't give them what they want. And I just think that's really offensive. That's offensive to me. It should be offensive to everyone in the City Council. The Planning Commission voted to not recommend that this property be rezoned, and that was for a good reason. You know, you heard Mr. McAlexander get up here and speak, you know, 30 years ago. This is the leftover piece of property, plus or minus five maybe usable acres. That was left over out of about 40, 45 acres of development where they developed Cracker Barrel and some shopping centers. They developed condos across the street on Country Club Lane. There's a reason why this is not commercial property. It's because it's on Country Club Lane, which is a 100% residential area. It's always been residential. It's always supposed to be residential. That was the deal that the prior administration made when they relocated Country Club Lane and created Van Drive and allowed all that development. There's really too many reasons to sit here. I don't have enough time in these three minutes. I think I've shared a lot of those reasons with you about not rezoning this property. Is it the roughly 1,000 people in the West Highland Reserve corridor, what's north of Van Drive, west of Highland, east of 45, and south of Oylwell in that corridor? Nobody wants us. There's maybe one resident, Alan Kastman, who's a realtor, partner of Alex Holman, who goes over there, that has actually spoken in favor of this. So, you know, I just don't, I don't, I think this is the easiest decision that you will have to make today, vote no. You all will not have to live with what's over there. We will. And, you know, we tried to engage them, tried to work out a deal, tried to make, you know, a good situation out of a bad situation, and we got burned and it didn't work out. And that's unfortunate. But we respect the request that you vote no on this rezoning request. Thank you.
Question. I have a question to ask you.
Yes, sir.
You said that, do you live over there?
I do, yes, sir.
All right. You mentioned that the Planning Commission voted not to recommend it.
Yes, sir.
And in looking over the Minister of Planning Commission, it appears to me that they didn't get enough votes in order for it to pass. And that would be different than voting not to recommend it. So do you concede that point?
If you'd be the expert on that, I would say that they came with a non-recommendation or no recommendation out of the Planning Commission.
Yeah, you have to have a certain number of votes in order for it to pass, and it did not get that number of votes. So they didn't vote not to recommend it. They just didn't get the requisite number of votes for it to go forth. You mentioned earlier that the developers, or Mr. Miller and all of them, that they pulled out of an agreement. They didn't do what they said they would do. What was, give me that again.
That's right. I mean, they stood in front of the commission and said, we had a handshake agreement. We'd reached an agreement with the Country Club. We thought we had an agreement. You know, my stipulation is that we entered into the agreement before the first reading last Tuesday. That didn't happen last minute. And it made it pass the first reading. And then they came back with material changes to a deal.
No, I'm asking, what is it that they said they would do that they reneged on, according to you?
Well, there's a few things. One has to do with the approval and review and approval of the drainage, which is a substantial problem, that piece of property over there. You know, and what we did, councilmen, you know, we went in there and we actually offered our assistance, our help, our support, our friendship. Wanted to bring them into the family and actually help them, work with them, to create a win in a bad situation for all the neighbors over there.
So let's do this. When we get to the agenda item and then we talk about, because that was discussed at the last meeting, then we can bring that topic back up, councilmen. We can talk about that. So we'll do that. We'll wait for the agenda item and talk about those questions. So we'll call you back up then.
Happy to come up. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, next up, we have Brandon Rowland.
Good morning.
Good to see you, everyone. Next time we see each other, maybe it'll be fun. My name's Brandon Rowland. I was born and raised here in Jackson. Still proudly call it home. And I've had the privilege of representing this city all over this country and internationally, both in sports and business. And I'm here today because I want to see Jackson continue to thrive and for all of us to remain proud of our city. With that being said, from a broader planning perspective, a drive through Jackson makes it clear that we've fallen short in enforcing zoning standards. The aesthetics of our major thoroughfares are disappointing, and that's a direct result of lax zoning and allowing developers too much leeway. This proposal, as presented, would only add to that ongoing problem. Furthermore, over the past few months, as Todd indicated, we've had several interactions, myself personally, with one of the two partners in this development. And unfortunately, he has been very misleading regarding site plans, neighborhood considerations, tenant commitments, contracts with other parties, including misrepresenting to y'all who actually supports their rezoning request. Their own signage on the property indicates to me that they're not going to follow through with their high-end development that they keep promising to me. While I don't know the other partner personally, I believe he is generally respected. It's unfortunate that his associate has undermined this project's credibility. In closing, I'd like to say thank you for allowing public comments. I sincerely hope you listen to your citizens and consider the broader implications to our city, and not necessarily special interest of a few. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next up, we have Jeff Vaughn.
Good morning.
Folks, I was here last month. I am a local designer, been in the Jackson area since '92. And the point that I would like to share with you this morning is regarding the general design approach for solving the use of this property to the highest and best use of not only the business owners, sorry, the developers, but also the surrounding residents, the surrounding commercial development, and the property tax benefits to the city. So there's always more than one way to solve a design problem, and that's what designers are all about. And it's just how do we address the primary issue of generating the highest and best use for the property to the benefit of whoever's going to be developing and owning the property but the surrounding community. So that is the primary point that I'd like to make here. You know, the concept of having it simply duplex, 88 duplex rental units on that property, from an area resident standpoint, doesn't seem to be the highest and best use of the property. from a resident, an area resident standpoint, doesn't seem to be the highest and best use of the property. There is also the benefit of having some commercial on this property for the area residents, depending on what the developer does with bringing a tenant in for whatever the commercial building or buildings might provide for. So the, the little concept that you probably received from me by email last Friday or over the weekend indicates an opportunity to generate residential development along Country Club to the benefit of those existing residential units along Country Club so that they don't have to look at a commercial development necessarily. And also provide for at least one commercial building right in the center of the property, which is a location where I have seen a previous development like Site Layout Plan depict. And then on the far end, where I've shown three residential developments, those three residential units could be replaced with yet another commercial building. So again, the concept is, or the, the point is, there is, in my opinion, through years of service, a way to generate something that is mutually agreeable, a win-win situation, if you will, but also a method of being a good neighbor, call it, is it fair and reasonable to all concerned? Will it build goodwill and better friendships and be of benefit to the tax basis of the city of Jackson?
Thank you.
All right, last we have Alex Holman.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So it's gonna be tough to respond to all that in three minutes, but I'll give it a shot. We did, we, last month, we came up here, Todd referenced an agreement multiple times. We were close to having an agreement with them, we met them at the Country Club, they're, they're concerned about the drainage. You know, they've got a lot of acreage flowing into their golf course and it's causing issues for them. I do want to note, they haven't, they just did a multimillion dollar renovation and really didn't address any of those drainage concerns on their own property. So I think that, that's an issue. But B, when, when he put all of the, the agreement, or the agreement that we were close to having and writing, he added a lot of approval language and things like that that we're not okay with. And our bankers, our attorney, they all advised us not to sign it. So we're not gonna sign something that our attorney advises us not to sign. So that, that, that's the, that's the, the story of what happened there. As far as him talking about us wanting to be slum lords, I mean, we're, we're not trying to do that, we're just trying to explain, hey, this is, this is the current zoning, this is what the current zoning allows, this is what we can do to turn a profit on this property? That, we don't want to do that, we'd rather do something nice, and that's what we're here trying to do. And then as far as to, to kind of address Jeff's, the drawing that Jeff has proposed, everybody's gonna have a different opinion on this side, guys. We're, the, the fact of the matter is, we're the ones that own it. We, we know what we can do to make money on it, we know it's on Van Drive, we know we can do something commercial and make it nice. You know, kind of with, with the drawing that he's got there, we're gonna have to spend a million dollars in infrastructure and then sell fifteen, twenty lots for fifty thousand dollars. I mean, it's not, it doesn't math out. But I do appreciate that everybody has, has their own opinion, it's just, you know, we, we've offered to sell the property multiple times to any of these neighbors of Jackson Country Club, and there's been, there's been zero interest. So we, we've given them ample opportunity to A, either come to an agreement, or B, purchase the property from us. And there's only one way to control exactly what happens to a piece of property, and that, that's to own it. So with that being said, that's really, that's, that's really all I've got. I'd appreciate it if, if you guys would vote yes on this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. That concludes public comment, and so we'll move on to the first reading. Come on up, Nathan. Item one is proposed budget amendment number ten to recognize insurance recovery for Street Department tractor unit four-nine-eight-five, the amount of fifty-seven thousand ninety-nine dollars.
So moved.
Second.
First, second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item two, proposed budget amendment to recognize the PSN grant, Project Safe Neighborhoods, for FY twenty-six, the amount of forty-four thousand three hundred and seventy dollars.
Motion. Second.
Motion second. Discussion from council. Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three is proposed budget amendment to recognize CFE, Summer Job Connect Grant, for twenty thousand dollars.
Council moved.
Second. Motion, second. Any discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item four is proposed budget amendment to transfer fifty-five thousand from ARPA funds from on-call truck to paving equipment trailer.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second. Discussion from council.
Yeah, let me ask a question about that. The on-call truck, what is the on-call truck? A truck that's on-call, I guess. What is it?
It's a truck that's on-call.
I am trusting that, I am trusting that Austin is on his way up here. A backup's on the way. Uh, but, uh...
We got, no, don't, Nathan, it's okay, Johnny's gonna do it.
Sir?
Johnny's gonna do it.
Johnny's got it. Good morning, Mayor, Council. What was your question?
What the on-call truck, what does, what does it do? What is it?
Oh, that's a twenty-four hour on-call truck that, that, um, the guys has used as after-hours.
They use after-hours?
Yeah.
All right, now, it's being transferred to the paving equipment trailer, and I don't ask any questions about that as long as you got the word paving in there, I'm, I'm fine with it. But at some point during this fiscal year, you're gonna have to come back and ask for fifty-five thousand dollars to get this on-call truck?
No, actually, we bought that truck last year. That, the on-call truck, that truck came in last year. All right? So we, we do have an on-call truck on hand.
All right, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Just following the money here now. Right now, where's that fifty-five, fifty-five thousand dollars?
That's just a little bit of the ARPA money that's left over that was budgeted for the Street Department, that's Sticks Free Day. And they had, it had made it into this year's budget possibly because of when the truck came in last year, it was still in the budget. They also need this, I mean, I think they explained at the agenda review meeting, but they, in order to actually use the paving equipment that we've purchased, they're gonna have to have a paving trailer for that, so...
And, okay, the question was, why did we not know this a month ago when we did the budget?
Well, that's something I can't answer for you, sir. I suspect-
Austin's here, he said they, they thought they could-
They thought they had a trailer.
The trailer, they tried to work it and it was too heavy for the trailer.
Yeah, the low-boy trailer that we had on-site, we thought that that trailer would actually work.
And to be honest, and I, I don't want to complicate this any further, it probably was not necessary to make this budget amendment, but we just wanted this to be visible to you that the intent of the money was changing.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you, thank you, Johnny. Item five, proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery for City Hall and the NED, the amount of nineteen thousand four hundred and fifty-five dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item six, proposed budget amendment to transfer twenty-five thousand five hundred dollars from Planning Contractual Services to Commerce Street Project.
Motion.
Motion?
Second.
Second? Discussion?
I do, the Planning Contractual Services, who's over, what department's over there?
That's Stan.
Will, will you all have to come back in this fiscal year to ask for the twenty-five thousand dollars back?
May?
It's possible, but not at this time, we, we don't have any need to do that. So this is, this is to take the money that's basically in our contractual services that we usually pay our consultants with and move it. And y'all have approved a consultant contract with Kimberly Horn to do the planning and the design work on the Commerce Street sidewalk project. So we're just moving the money over to the project side.
Now, when you say it's possible that you have to a- ask for it again in this budget year, under what circumstances would you have to ask for it back?
The contractual service line item pays for all of our traffic studies and, and the things that we do that are related to other projects. And so the only reason we'd come back to you is if we exhausted that money, and if we did, we would tell you why.
Okay, does it look at this point that you probably will exhaust the money?
We don't, we don't have any need to do that at this time.
Okay, what I'm saying, but down the road, does it look like you would probably have to use the money?
Those contractual services, especially with traffic studies, are based on developers turning in projects. So we have no way to really measure how many of those we'll have. Of late, we've been doing a lot of them. We've had a lot of convenience stores that have come down the pike, and we have to do a traffic study for each one of those, and we have to have that traffic study reviewed by our consulting engineers. So at this time, we have no way to tell you if it's gonna be adequate or if it's not. We, we will, if we come to you, it'll be based on a need, not a want.
Okay, and is this necessary because the Commerce Street project is twenty-five thousand dollars in the, in the, in the red?
It was, no, it was, it's broken into two phases. And so the phase one we did in last year's budget, and this is the consulting for the second phase, which is the railroad crossing. And the reason why it was broken into two phases is because railroad takes some time to work through and re, and review the design and approve it, so that was the reason.
It's also-
Traffic, hold on, was it?
I'm sorry. It's also relevant, this, this budget amendment also perhaps was not strictly necessary. They could have paid for this engineering out of contractual, contractual services, but this is just a matter to keep it visible to you that this is going to this project.
Okay, this is for consulting, the twenty-five thousand is for?
It's to design services for the railroad crossing. We have to propose how we're gonna go across the railroad and satisfy the railroad with it, so...
Thank you.
Councilman McNairy?
Does the business owner that creates this need for a traffic study, do they not pay for that?
No, they do not. They pay their consultant to do the traffic study, but then we pay a consulting engineer to review those because we're not traffic.
So I think, yeah, they pay for the study, we have to pay for an engineer to review the traffic study and come back with a record. Yeah. Councilman Lawrence?
So what do we know now that we did not know when we made this budget a month and a half ago?
What did we not know?
Now, what do we, yeah, what is called, so, why wasn't this in the budget?
It was.
But not as, not signed, it would be transferring, even though Nathan says you don't have to.
It was overlooked.
It was what?
Overlooked.
Overlooked, okay, good answer. Straightforward, I appreciate that.
I mean, I'm just-
Yeah, being honest.
Any further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
Item seven, proposed budget amendment to transfer one-hundred-and-seventy-five thousand from Recreation Admin Equipment and two-hundred-and-fifty thousand from Recreation Admin Buildings to Senior Centurion Center, the total amount of four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand.
I do have questions.
Okay, so we get a motion on the table, first we have discussion on it.
Motion.
Second.
All right, now it goes to discussion.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Black, would you mind explaining to us, because I just want to make sure that we are not gonna be shorting the parking wrecks and the equipment we were gonna have for American Disability Act and that sort of place.
No, it was not. We really did look, took a deep dive and looked. This is coming from capital that was approved. Most of it mainly was with Kate Campbell for ADA and some other things, and we can come back in a later year and take care of that, so... And we looked at some other line items, we'll be fine. We will not have to come back in terms of, we will be back again for some amendments that, but it's, it's budget neutral, doesn't affect the fund balance at all.
Okay. I'm all for finishing the senior center, but I am really strong to get the equipment that we need for the ADA.
Yeah.
So just want to make sure that we're not falling behind in that.
No.
Okay.
Councilman Lawrence?
This is coming out of capital?
Yes.
I was thinking we were gonna try to hold off on spending capital until we got a chance to review departments individually, especially since we need police cars so desperately. So I wonder, are we doing this before we make a full review? On the, when we pass the budget, we basically just passed everything that was asked for, with the fact that these meetings, if I understood correctly, that we would be meeting the departments and reviewing them in detail. And so far, we haven't. I, I think we ought to be holding off on a lot of big capital until we look at everybody's budget, not just the parks and wrecks.
Councilman Lawrence, this particular budget amendment is budget neutral, first of all, based on the budget that you passed. Second, we have a need, obviously, to complete this project, we're under contractual obligations to contractors for this one. Your larger point is well-taken, and, and I would agree with you on a lot of this. This particular budget amendment, I, I think, in order to move ahead with this project, you, we need, we need to go ahead and do this.
Okay, that makes sense, thank you.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, refresh my memory, when we approved the monies for the senior center, we didn't approve all the money that was necessary in order to, to build it and furnish it?
So this particular budget amendment, it's one of these things, if you recall, in last budget year, we would come up and do like, well, we had a dump truck in the twenty-four budget, but you didn't roll over to the twenty-five budget. This is, in fact, the same thing. The funds that were necessary to complete this project were not budgeted in the FY twenty-six budget. Carryover funds are, are not something that we do. It's probably due to a misunderstanding about the appropriation process and have carryover works going forward. We're going to be sure that these kind of things are taken care of as we get into budgeting in January, February, and also some of the control systems that we had in place, I was speaking with Councilman Lawrence earlier about, show us when these things are hanging out there, as it was. This just was simply not budgeted for, Councilman Donnell.
Okay, so when we passed the budget for the senior center, they asked the question, is we didn't budget enough money to complete the project? Is that right?
You did not budget any money in FY twenty-six for the senior center? At the completion of the senior center, excuse me. You budgeted operating funds for the senior center, but not actually the completion of the facility.
Was a request made of us to, to, to fund that?
No, sir, it was not.
Why not?
It was overlooked.
And that's the second overlook now?
Yeah.
But, and that's, that's what I was saying, this, there are new purchasing controls in place that we're gonna see these projects hanging out. They will be obvious to us beginning, well, right now. I mean, we could literally print a report and show you all the money that we've committed for any project this year. We don't have that from last year since we were not using a purchasing system last year.
So the equipment that was to have been purchased by the Recreation Department that will not be purchased if this passes, is a substantial amount of equipment, Mr. Black?
Repeat that.
The equipment that you all would have, would have purchased for the Recreation Department with this money, it won't be purchased now, is that right?
Not this year, no.
And the, uh, okay. All right, thank you.
Is it necessary, the four-hundred-and-twenty-five thousand, is that, I have to?
There, yes, ma'am, and, I mean, we, I mean, the, the funds need to be in the correct place for us to be able to pay the bills.
Sure.
And we will come back to you again in October with a, with a slightly smaller budget amendment to re-appropriate a couple of other funds, but, I mean, this, this needs to be done. And there are contractors that, that we need to pay.
Any further discussion from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed seven to two, no.
All right, item eight is consideration of an ordinance to amend Title Five, Chapter Three of the Code of the City of Jackson to add the language that was originally found in section twenty-three, twenty-four dot three and twenty-four dot four of the former code of the City of Jackson, which is under the commission form of government.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. I'm gonna run down Nathan and/or Ron quickly so we can explain what all that means.
It's terribly exciting because we are finally collecting property tax in our new Tyler property tax system. But in the preparation to do that, we had to enter the penalty and interest rates for delinquent taxes in the system. And wanting to make sure that we were fully supported in the things that we did, we went looking for the basis for those rates. And they were not where we expected them to be. If you look in the city's charter, the charter makes a reference to the code, and if you look in the city's code, it makes a reference to the charter. And so I brought this to Ron's attention, and-
In searching for the basis, because we had documents that referenced the formula that the city's been using on, on delinquent property taxes for decades, we were able to find it in a version of the code from nineteen eighty-two, I believe, in the mayor's cabinet. And so that was the formula for, that you have been using as a city for decades. What we believe happened is, is when the charter was amended in eighty-nine, when your code of ordinances was recodified, the way I would describe it is the biblical scribe forgot to carry it over.
Oh, good.
And so more of a clerical error than anything else. And so essentially, what you were doing is, is you are recodifying the law that has been the law for decades as the law, so that way the public can see it again. It, it still has been in effect. Every, every time you pass a new ordinance, you have a new ordinance that is in effect but has not been codified. This is essentially the same situation here, just has been the case for decades, rather than typically a year at most.
All right, any questions from council? Council, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
All right, thank you. Item nine is consideration of an ordinance to accept a proposal from the Department of Transportation of the State of Tennessee in connection with a project referred to as Interchange at Christmasville Road, Phase Two, Route I forty. Interchange at Christmasville Road, Phase Two, Route I-40.
So moved.
Hear the motion, second. Discussion from counsel? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Stan.
Thank you, Stan.
That was much easier.
The second reading, item one, proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery of $11,520.76 for JPD Unit 2262.
So moved.
Second.
All right, motion second, further discussion?
Let me ask a question, what insurance company is that?
PE Partners.
Who?
PE Partners.
Okay, I, I listened quite intently this morning on NPR about how it's been documented in the court cases come out, that insurance companies shortchange their policyholders on total losses, and that it's, all insurance, most insurance companies do that, and that the insurer has a right to get a third party to, to come up with what they think the loss is, is. So with this insurance company, you, we confident that the amount they offered is, is sufficient?
Is Stacy in here, I don't know?
Yes.
Okay, I can, I'm gonna speak generally about this, and I'll let Stacy speak more specifically. PE Partners is, is not a traditional insurance company, it is a, basically a co-op of, of city and municipal members all over the state. The second thing is that in almost all cases, especially in that of a total loss, they actually, they employ or we employ together an independent adjuster to, to do these things, so.
Correct, that is correct. We work with the police department to make sure we get what they show as the values on the equipment and everything that's attached to that vehicle. We submit all of that to the insurance company. They do send an independent adjuster out to, to review all that, and that's how they come together with that number.
All right, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item two, proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery of $17,000 plus $580.23 for JPD, JPD Unit 2128 for repairs, plus tow bill of $100.
Motion.
And motion?
Second.
Second, further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item three, proposed budget amendment to recognize the AARP Community Challenge Grant for $20,000 for Office of Innovation.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
Item four, proposed budget amendment to recognize insurance recovery of $13,228.13 for JPD Unit 2272 for repairs.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second, further discussion? Counsel, please vote.
Motion passed nine to zero.
I want to be comfortable, Stan. Item five, consideration of an ordinance to rezonate property located at 191 Van Drive from RG1 General Residential District to SC1 Plan Unit Commercial Development District, comprising a 5.03 acres, more or less.
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second, all right, now we have discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Stan, just one more thing, there's, there's been obvious concerns about design in regard to infrastructure and other factors. Could you briefly just walk us through the process, because, I mean, this is the zoning piece, and then what will it look like as, if it passes, if it progresses into the, the planning stage?
All right, so, as you stated, this is the rezoning piece of the development process. They have to get commercial zoning to go forward with their plans to do a mixed-use development there. If the zoning is successful, then the SC1 zoning requires that they submit a pre-development plan, a preliminary development plan, prior to entering the permitting part of the process. That will go to the planning commission, we will review that, and all those things that we talked about, at least the fundamental components of access and building placement, and those things are the things the planning commission will review, and we review also, and we give them a recommendation. As they enter the permitting process, that's not the end of it, the, once the permit process is entered, they have now a detailed set of plans for construction, and we'll review that again, and that's when we normally get traffic studies and we get hydraulic studies. And in the city of Jackson, we follow a zero net increase for drainage, and what that means is when there's, the stormwater produced by their site, as, as you know, I'm not gonna assume that you don't, stormwater is just runoff in most cases, and so anytime you have impervious surface, parking lots, buildings, that water runs off at a, at a quicker rate. And so, what the hydraulic study does is measure the volume of that runoff, and basically what they're do, what they have to do is they have to engineer a system that will basically produce the same level leaving the site as it did pre-development. So usually that's accomplished with detention ponds that hold the water and release it a slower rate, so that, that water leaving the site is at a volume based on what it was at the pre-development stage. Now, they're not required to fix all problems, that's not the charge when they're developing property, they're only to mitigate their drainage and what is produced there. Now, does factors play into that? Does existing factors play in? Yes, it does, but it does not, it's, it's a component, but it's, again, if you had issues that are beyond the development and beyond the property, then they would not be required to fix that. They're just required to mitigate what comes through their site and what they produce that's added to that, and make sure that at the pre-development level, that they're not increasing it. So, in a nutshell, that's what the drainage component looks like. The traffic component, we get a traffic study, they hire a traffic engineer to do that study, we have a consulting engineer that will review that study, and basically the study looks at the traffic produced by the development and determines what improvements the developer will have to do to mitigate that traffic caused by their development. That could be decel lanes along Van Drive, it could be a signal, it could be additional laneage, could be on, on Country Club, it all depends on access points and the traffic generation caused by the uses that are on the site. So, that's a synopsis. As the mayor knows, I could talk more, but, but I, I choose not to.
Question.
Go ahead, Counselman McMillan.
Does the public have an opportunity to express their opinion about what is produced at the planning commission meeting, the next phase?
It's a public meeting, they can attend the meeting. It is a technical review, so it's up to the chairman. The chairman can allow someone to speak, but again, it's, it's not required, it's not a public hearing, it's a public meeting, and it's really about the technical aspects of the site, you know, where the buildings are placed, whether they meet their lock coverage, whether their aisles are wide enough, you know, those things that we normally view a part of a site plan.
Thank you.
Stan, you don't have any idea right now the size of the retention pond? It would have to depend on the plan.
It would depend on the hydraulic study, yes ma'am.
Right, and then I also heard you say additional laneage? So are you saying that there is a possibility it would need a turn lane either on Country Club or Van Drive?
I would almost guarantee there's improvements like that, that'll be necessary. Now, along Van, it may be a decel lane or, as a, as a right turn into the site, that would come off of their property, or within the, if there's enough right of way, would come in the right of way. In Country Club, it'd be the same, we'd look at the turning movements out of there and whether it was warranted to have an extra turn lane or a signal, we would look at that then.
Okay.
Counselman Lawrence?
There's a few things that I just, I feel like were unfairly said when it was up here, that they said that Alan Castleman was his partner. I don't like when people say things that aren't true, especially when somebody's not there to defend themselves. So to make it misleading to say that the one person that spoke for it was his partner and had some kind of financial, financial interest does not seem fair or right. I wanted to clear that, yes, they work for the same brokerage, but neither are the broker. But at the same time, my question is this, how much or can, do, can you tell, do you know what kind of property tax revenue we would receive from this versus it being rental versus it being commercial and residential?
Well, again, I can't speak to the, the level. I can tell you that residential property, if it's, if it's purely residential, is taxed 25%. If it is multifamily, you know, if, if it's considered to be a multifamily development, then it'd be taxed at 40%. If it's a commercial development, of course, it's taxed at 40%. So the, the value would also change, you know, residential property versus commercial property has a higher value, so all that goes into calculating, but the property assessor does that, and, and while you could estimate or, or guess, or someone smarter than I could, they, I don't, I couldn't tell you what the difference is at this point, other than it'll be more than it would be probably now.
All right, any other questions, counsel, discussion?
I have one more question. We don't really have a site plan yet, correct?
No, that's, that's not a requirement of the rezoning process. Again, I, I think, I've explained this before, you know, during the phase of rezoning, we're, all this, we're looking at is, is the property appropriate for commercial zoning? It's not, we don't get into site plan issues really at this stage, we're just saying, is it appropriate for the zoning they're asking for?
Counselman Donnell, you had some questions earlier, are they satisfied? Good, okay. Counselman Lawrence, you have a question?
Okay, if this fails, when can it be brought up again, or can it be?
The zoning ordinance says if this were to actually fail, they're locked out for 12 months, they can't come back with anything for a year.
Could the council bring it back up?
Staff could, or, or the city, or, I, I don't know about the council, it gets, but the council representing the city, I guess, could request that we bring it back up. I, I don't know that I've ever seen that happen, but, and I've been here a little while.
Am I hearing, yes, the council could bring it back up if they wished?
In, in the zoning ordinance, it, it says the city, the planning staff or planning commission, or the property owner. So it doesn't say city council, it says city. So if that's the council, then, then, then I guess if you voted to, to bring it back up, you could.
So, just, I'm understanding the question. So you're asking, if the council votes against the rezoning, can they bring the same rezoning back up before 12 months?
Yes, right.
Okay.
It's been my experience that staff...
I mean, that would not be...
Yeah.
Well, I think Robert Schulz of Order said, if a council person changes his mind, he can bring it back up.
Okay, we're getting to reconsider now, to reconsider, it has to be somebody voted on the firm.
I think if you wanted to do that, you would need to table it, if you sincerely wanted to have more discussion or more...
I'm pretty confident that, that the city or the planning staff or planning commission could, the property owner's locked out, so that's, that's to keep you from a resident or a property owner coming back every month and said, well, you didn't approve it this month, can I have it again, can I have it again? And, and nothing's changed, so, again, I think it's clear that the city and the planning commissioner or planning staff is not barred for 12 months, but, but the property owner would be.
This is just voting on...
Mr. Chairman, hold then Stovall.
And this is just voting on the zone. This is not approving anything with the plan, this is not approving anything other than giving them the zone so they can go through and start doing the studies and see what's actually feasible. Nothing's gonna be built, nothing can be built until all of this is done.
That's right, we, we, the zoning would just get the property zoned so they could do commercial development. They still gotta go through the commercial development process, go the planning commission, go through the permitting process, so there's several steps that follow after this.
Just for everybody, how long does that usually take? Because I know that there's one that we've been working on right now for two months, for two, almost two years.
It just depends on the factors associated with the property. If, you know, if they, if they got the zoning, then, then they have to go into, the preliminary development plan can be done fairly quickly because it's just a, basically a start. The actual plans for doing the, the actual permitting and the traffic studies and the drainage studies take longer, because the traffic study, you know, sometimes those take months too, because the developer will submit a traffic study, then we review it, and there may be some back and forth to get things where they need to be.
Counselman Stovall?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, just a couple of things. You know, last month, we had over 300 signatures requesting that we vote not to close Lane Avenue, and we went against those wishes, voted to close Lane Avenue. I, I don't think it's wise, and that's a much, much more vocal majority than the vocal minority that we've heard today. It is a very vocal minority, and I just don't think it's wise. I, I appreciate the drawing, I appreciate the concept plan, but to, to that gentleman, I, you know, if that's what you wanted to do with it, you should have bought the property and done it with it. These folks have the vested interests, they've spent the money, we've already approved it on the first reading, so I would be, I'm, as far as I'm concerned, I'm ready to vote, but rest of the council can... Mayor, if I could speak, you brought up the lane property, it's totally different from this. Lane property, it was the property only brought in, it was the president of the college brought it, and it was for safety issue. That was, so it's totally different. No, it's not, it's still 300 residents.
Let's address the, the issue and not each other. Counselman Lawrence?
It was mentioning the differences, and we got one of them is the water runoff that they wanted some control over, they being the anti-group here. What are the other differences? We were close to signing an agreement, and now it's blown up, and the parties are just miles apart. What are the, are the differences, can we pinpoint them?
You would have to ask the developer, I'm, I'm not an expert on, on their agreement.
Okay, I'd like to ask the...
Alex.
Yeah.
You want this?
Both of them.
Yeah.
Yeah, Seropi.
Stan, you can sit in the middle.
All right, so, yeah, there we go, all right.
So, so my question is, it seemed like we just were so close to having an agreement, and now we don't want to not have an agreement, we almost don't want to talk to each other, so what's the difference?
No, we'll, we'll talk to it. We, we met out there at the golf course, guys, their, their concern is the drainage. There's 1,500 acres almost, 1,200 to 1,500 acres flowing into that golf course, and we, Colin and I, I'll speak on behalf of both of us, we feel like they're kinda trying to hold us hostage over developing our property, thinking that whatever we develop is gonna negatively affect their property, when, when in reality is, they've already got 1,500 acres flowing into it. It was built in a flood zone, you know, I just, that, that's kind of our, our view on it. Like Stan said, we're gonna have to retain our water, our water's not going to affect them. And the, the agreement that we had did not include a bunch of wastewater approval and things like this. Todd, when we met, we said that we'd let you guys review the drainage plans, but at the end of the day, we're gonna do what's required by the city of Jackson and, and the engineers, the, the consultants that they hire. So that, that was kind of our major hangup, was, you know, that's not really what we agreed to in person, and then when you put it in writing, it's like, they have approval over everything on the site, and guys, we're the ones borrowing the money and taking the risks to, to develop it, so that would be my response to that.
Oh, yes, Mr. Lawrence, I, you know, I, I think there are, there are a number of things, and, and I don't, I don't hate Colin or Alex, you know, I, I don't blame, they're, they're trying to make, make a lot of money, make $7 million here, that's why they're here. I don't blame them, so, so I, you know, I, I don't think there's a deal can be reached, and, and the, the difference is loss of confidence, character, and, and being truthful about it, you know, you get, you get, sometimes you get parties, again, not to be disparaging, but certain people will say whatever you want to hear, depending on the audience that's there, to, to get, gain approval, and then, and then sort of back, backtrack and retrade on those, those points. I, I, I don't, I don't wanna, I don't wanna get in a situation where I'm saying Alex and Colin are liars, or Todd's a liar, I don't want to be, I don't want to be calling them liars, but I, but I know if we gotta, if we have deal points that are bullet pointed, and we're sitting, sitting with country club lads, and that's in the agreement, and, you know, so the drainage is one thing, review and approval of drainage, which shall not be unreasonably withheld. We're not here to be unreasonable, we're here to protect a hundred-year, a, a thing that's been here 100 years, it's really good for the city of Jackson, like, really good for it. If you want, if you want great development, you want, you want businesses, big industry to come in town, where do you think they come in?
I totally agree with that.
It's an important thing.
Great developments, we want business, we want to see growth, and we want to see it the right way. To that, can you tell me some things that you and Colin have developed that have, have gone towards that growth in good development and good businesses?
Yeah, I mean, here in Jackson, I've, I've done stuff with buddies all over the country, but here in Jackson specifically, I did Jonathan's Grill off exit 85, I did the, I was responsible for putting the Class A apartment deal together over there by Copper Creek, so Banner Properties, the 300-unit Class A apartment complex. I've done a number of different lease deals and build outs and stuff, Domino's, Orange Theory Fitness, and stuff like that, but Colin has done multiple neighborhoods primarily, Briar Hill off exit 85, Palmer Woods, Ashberry Farms, over in Three Way. Palmer Woods, Ashberry Farms over in Three Way. So, I mean, we've, we've, although I'm fairly young, you know, Colin's older than me, obviously. But, you know, we've done, we've done quite a bit in Jackson to help further improve the city, so. I mean, if, if you just look at Exit 85, I mean, the Jonathan's Grill, the, all the other stuff that's going on over there that I've been pretty involved with, I mean, it's, it's been explosive for that exit, so.
Councilor Lawrence?
Okay, and the water is a problem. What is your next difference that, that you just fell through?
That, that's, that's really it. I mean, we, we, we went, we had our attorneys go back to Todd, and, and we tried negotiating something that was more in line with what we had talked about, and they, we were, I, I felt like we were kind of shut down.
Yeah, Todd?
There were about six or seven points, about half of them, honestly, I'm fine, would, would have been fine with. The, the review and approval of drainage was, was, was a big thing. There's some just objective standards regarding materials that you're going to use in the, in the development. Like, for instance, like, you want to have more than like 10% metal siding on the, on the, on the back of a building or something like that, or on the exterior of a building. Just something that these neighbors on Van Drive don't want to look at, things like that. So that was okay at first, and then it wasn't. We, we asked for a, a, a brick wall, a, a long country club lane, just really for the, for our neighbors over there in the condos. And then one that divided the, the commercial development from the residential development. You know, part of this was, was sort of partner with them and offering them gated access to our golf course for a high-end residential development they're going to build. And then really the last thing was they, they wanted, and I understand what he's saying, but they, they wanted us at the country club to give down another 25 feet of frontage along, basically, the old abandoned portion of, of country club lane that's adjacent to our property. They wanted us to give that to them, and they, and they said it's for landscaping easement. That wasn't ever discussed. And, and, and look, I had to sort of go out and lend about to these guys and really work hard to get, to get the, the support of my board for it. And I had it, and I had a signed deal, and it was like, once they got past the first reading, you know, they, maybe they felt they didn't need us. I don't really know. But the consensus was that they, they backed out of the deal, and I'm just, you know, again, I don't want to get into he said, she said situation. But there, you know, there's a couple significant issues, and we've made a lot of concessions. And I think Alex would agree with me at first, we want one acre retention pond, Alex, no, we can't agree to that. I said, okay, I'll take that out of there.
Excuse me, Todd, did you say one acre?
Yes, yes, ma'am, I did. I, I said, and I had that in there, and I think I said plus or minus one acre.
I thought I understood it was five acres that y'all were wanting.
No, that's the whole size of that property.
That, that's the, that's the amount we're looking to rezone. They were asking for a one acre of retained area.
One acre, okay.
And we, we backed off that. We did, we said, you know what, you're right. You know, we, I don't know what, I don't know what kind of retention is going to require. But we want to be involved with the process.
Councilor Gane is, he's next, and then we'll come to you, Councilor Wallace. Briefly. Councilor May has a question that we can.
So with the neighborhood, being president of the Lambeth Area Neighborhood Association, would the neighborhood be okay with 80 some odd rental properties?
I don't, I don't think zoning supports that density. I don't think they can do that, I don't think they can do it over there anymore.
Well, we can ask that, does it?
The point being, you know, if Midtown could have done anything, we would have not had rental property because homeownership is the great thing, commercial we could have handled. Will y'all be happy with apartments?
I mean, I, I can't, I can't speak for everybody in the neighborhood. You know, if, if, if that's, if that's what they choose to do, if the city approves that over there, then, you know, so be it. I mean, we'll, we'll welcome them as neighbors as well over there. I mean, we're, we're, we really are pretty tight in the community, all of these different neighborhoods around here. And we are pretty unified, and others, not, not over here. People are, you know, people at court today, we have judges, we have bankers, we have people that are traveling. There's a lot of people that are against this, and I know you've heard, heard from them in, in this neighborhood. It's unfortunate, we really, we really tried to, try to guard our way to work this out. And I, I would have liked to try to work it out, but.
I, I do want to note too, our, our first experience with Todd was not good. We, we went out there and cleared the property in preparations to get it developed. And I mean, he, you, you treated us very nasty that day, I'm going to be honest. We've, we've come a long way, but we did get ghosted by Todd and the entire Jackson Country Club for almost two months. They came to us right before last month's meeting, you know, dangled this contract in front of us and said, hey, if you sign it, I'll get you the votes. And I don't, that, that's not the way, that, that's not the way business is done, guys. We're trying to, we're trying to rezone a piece of property on Van Drive. It's the only piece that's not zoned. I mean, we, we're wanting to do something responsible here, and, and we think this is the best plan.
Councilor Wallace?
Okay, I want to be real professional, because I can feel myself. I don't want any more of he said, she said, any of that. No, I, I want the facts, period. In your all's agreement, if it's stated, you all would be fine with what the city says the retention pond has to be, would that have been agreeable? Todd?
I mean, I would, I would have to talk to my board about it, but, but I, I think what, in what, I think what I'm talking about is review and approval of what submitted the city, or the cities reviewed and approved.
Mayor.
I'm going to go a step further if I can.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, when we are sitting up here, we are supposed to determine only what is the best use of this land. I don't know if condos, I don't know if the rental property. I just know the front of Van Drive, I do feel is commercial. I would like to say to you, Alex, that your best intentions for this property, we've heard that, and I want you to stick with that if this is approved.
Right.
We have to find a way to move forward, to compromise, and I probably should end at that. But I just, this back and forth, and we can't do that. That's not good for our city, it's not good for the people that want to move here in the corporations, and I probably, I will stop on that.
Agreed. Councilor Doug?
Mayor, I would just like to, either way, we have a motion. Can we make a motion to table this and have a special call meeting to give these people opportunity to have discussion again, to come up with something?
My, my opinion on that.
I think it's a great opportunity for our community. I want to be fair to the neighbors out there.
I, I want to remind you, Council, what, what you're all, there's a motion, it's going to second to vote on, is not the design of the property, it's the zoning of the property.
And let me, let me just clear one thing.
Can we vote on that motion he's making?
On the motion to table?
Yeah, that way we can vote now and move on to approving or not approving.
The fact of the matter is, I mean, the, I appreciate the good faith effort of the country club, the developers to reach an agreement. However, that is by no means a requirement. And this is zoning. You have to take a leap of faith as far as what will come after a zoning request. However, while we appreciate y'all trying to pull this off, it's not required.
And let me, let me clarify that, because y'all are starting to kind of weave design stuff into a private agreement. That private agreement's not binding on, on our process. We're not a party to it, nor do we want to be. And we'll have to review it based on how we review things. And, and I get kind of uncomfortable when people start saying it'll be an acre, or it'll be this, or it'll be that. None of that's been calculated, and we'll have to review that, and it may take more than that, it may take less than that, I don't know. But just understand that private agreements like, and we tell people all the time, like restricted covenants, we don't enforce those. Those are, we only enforce the, the regulations that you, as a city, have adopted, and, and that's what we. Now, whether you take, you know, emphasis, or you, or you want to take that into consideration, that's up to you. But just understand that as we remove through the process, we will only review those things based on our process and under our regulations, so.
Unless there's an objection from any of my colleagues, I call for a question.
I object.
All right.
Go ahead, Councilor.
When y'all do the review of the water and all, and the whole proposal, is any aesthetics considered in that, or not?
Any what?
Aesthetics, looks of the buildings, what they use them.
I mean, a lot of times detention ponds become amenities, and at least they do in residential areas. They, a lot of times they have walking trails around them. Now, in commercial developments, it's, it may be a little bit different, but can they just have a mud hole out there? And, no, and with weeds growing up around it, no. But can they, can it, you know, it's to their, it's to their benefit that they keep it in good condition because the new regulations that come down from the federal government state that they have to review that and maintain that detention pond in, into perpetuity. So, you know, whoever owns it has to keep it in good working conditions.
So they present these studies to you, and the planning department, exactly how is that approved? Do you approve it? Do you carry it back to the planning commission? How's it approved?
The, we, we request that an engineer, a stamped set of plans. In, in other words, an engineer has to develop that plan. And then we ask our engineers, and if we feel like we need additional eyes, we ask the consulting engineers to review it and make sure that what's in the study makes sense. But again, ultimately, if something happens, if the engineer of record, which is the one that stamps those plans, doesn't, it doesn't work properly, they're still, they, they're become responsible, and it still has to be resolved.
Kind of pushing point, so basically, when we say we, we mean you.
Yes.
You would be the one to approve, okay. Well, she's fine. I think I've asked this before and got the answer I didn't like, but I'll ask it one more time. Is there any way that the city council could be involved in this after the preliminary development plan, after these two studies got in? I'm talking about water and traffic.
Yeah, when I'm, when I say we, I'm talking about our, you know, the planning staff, the engineering staffs. Could the council be involved? Normally, you're not. I mean, that's what you, that's what you've, the city has hired us to do, is to review that. And it, and it makes it, it makes it, when you take a process and you alter it, inconsistencies kill you. And so we try to stay consistent. The council doesn't weigh into those things because that's not your charge. The planning commission is supposed to be performing a, a technical review. If you bring the council into it, it becomes political, and that's, that's not what the planning commission is developed to be, and that's why they're set apart from you in their process.
Unless there's an objection from any of my colleagues, I call for the question.
All right, we have a call for questions, we're going to vote on the call for questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Council, please vote. I'm sorry, no, ma'am, this is, public comment is, is over.
We've got the country club, and you've got the development.
Ma'am, we had it, we had it, we had a call for, we had a call for questions, ma'am. This is, this, council please vote. Call for questions, vote on the call for questions.
Okay.
All right, now we're back on the motion on the table. Motion is second, is the original motion for consideration of an ordinance to rezone property located in 191 Van Drive. Council, please vote.
Motion passed six to three, no.
All right, council, I've gotten word that there needs to be a quick intermission, so we'll take a five, 10-minute break and come back in a few minutes.
Everybody's gone.
Just to make sure my heard. All right, we will resume the council meeting, and we will go on to new business. Item one is a consideration of street acceptance request for South Creek Center, Section 1.
So moved.
We have a motion, second. Second, discussion. Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item two is consideration of street acceptance request for Shallow Springs, Section 7A.
So moved.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second, further discussion?
Comment.
Okay.
I brought this up Thursday night. I just want this for the record, that we are doing everything in our power to address stormwater that you said you had. I'll just let you speak to it, because we've had some residents that were concerned about stormwater and what we're doing to address that.
Well, the streets, you know, this only involves the, the actual streets. And we, we don't bring it to you until they've satisfied all our requirements. And so when we bring these streets for acceptance, that means we've reviewed it through its various phases. We've gotten to the end, we've done a final inspection to make sure everything's good based on our rec, our regulations, and then we bring it to y'all. And then after that, there's still a year warranty.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item three, consideration of a street acceptance request for Shallow Springs, Section 8B.
So moved.
Motion second. Second, further discussion? Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item four is consideration of a street acceptance request for Shallow Springs, Section 7B and 8A.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, discussion. Council, please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item five is consideration of a resolution to request the state legislature to ban the sale of kratom in Tennessee. And I'll turn that over to Councilor Stovall.
Yes, I, after article published by Mr. Shields in the Jackson Post, and then receiving calls on the radio with Chuck Walker same day, or that week, we had some residents that asked us to look at forwarding this to our state legislature. Now, we as a city cannot ban this, but what we are asking, and what I would ask, is that we send this to our state representatives, let our state look at it and better handle it. There have been 2,000 deaths associated with this nationwide. The, the issue to, to the gentleman who spoke earlier may not necessarily be the plant itself, but what we're seeing is in gas stations and vape shops all across our city, it's, it's being put with other things. Ms. Teresa Luna, who I believe was here, maybe she still is here, she actually wrote the resolution, and it, it, it's making what is called gas station heroin out of it. Folks at Aspel have also said that, you know, people who are coming off of addictions from meth and things of that nature are getting hooked on kratom. And so they're just trading one substance for another substance. And while there certainly may be some good qualities to it, I, I think it, what we would do here is, we're, we're not banning it, we're just sending it to the state, letting them look at it as a resolution to determine what, what is the best course of action with it. Because 2,000 deaths nationwide, young people going into gas stations, it's packaged, some of it's packaged like Sour Patch Kids and things of that nature. It's, it's very dangerous and highly addictive, so that's, that's.
You say, you said that you aren't asking the state to ban it, but the title of the resolution says requesting the state to ban.
Well, yeah, I, so what we're doing, we can't, what I'm saying is, we as a city can't ban it. It has to go to the state.
But you're asking the state to ban it.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. Now, let me ask you, ask you this question. I've looked into this, and there, from what I'm, my, my reading of it, this kratom, is that the way you pronounce it, kratom? There are two versions of it, natural and synthetic.
Correct.
And from all of what I've read, that the synthetic kratom is the one that's still being sold in the gas stations, all that kind of stuff.
That is correct.
And then you hear from a gentleman today who says that he uses it in the natural form, and it helps him with his pain.
Sure.
And we received emails from others who use it naturally and not the synthetic. Would you, councilman, be amenable to amending the resolution to ask for the ban of the sale of synthetic kratom?
Absolutely.
All right, well, then I, I, I move that the, that the resolution be amended to substitute in lieu, in lieu of the sale of kratom. Use the words, the sale of synthetic kratom.
So let's, let's do this first, let's get a motion and a second on the, on the resolution, then we can amend the, the resolution. We have a motion on the resolution, as written now, then we can amend the resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. All right, now, Councilor, you have a motion to amend the resolution to include synthetic as opposed to just.
Yes, to delete the sale, the words, the sale of kratom in the state of Tennessee, to change it to the sale of synthetic kratom in the state of Tennessee.
Second.
And motion is second to amend the resolution to state the, the sale of synthetic kratom in Tennessee. We have discussion on the motion now, on the, on the amendment, motion to amend right now.
Can I ask a question about that?
Yes.
So how did we get this into a, into a resolution, not knowing and not understanding that there was synthetic and actual, which makes me have concerns?
I, I'll say this, I am, um.
And I, yes, I'm.
Y'all was going to ask if you had any feedback.
Okay. Morning.
Good morning.
All right, yes, there are, there are both. The plant is, in and of itself, has a couple of psychoactive ingredients in the, in the plant itself. Now, it is synthetically refined, and that's what we're seeing in the, in the convenience stores. What I, what I wanted to express to the council is that the state legislature has already passed a joint resolution, and was signed by the governor in May, to strictly regulate and prohibit kratom in sale, for possession and sale in Tennessee, if not an out-and-out ban. So they have not gotten to the point where they have had a bill pass. So they have not gotten to the point where they have, um, had a bill, uh, passed to actually criminalize it uh, and add it to the Controlled Substance Act as a state. Uh, the feds have not done that as well. But it is on the DA's, uh, list as, uh, a dangerous product.
So is this required since it's already passed?
Um, I couldn't tell you that it's required or not. It's, it certainly would be support for the, the existing resolution that just got passed.
I believe the county also passed a similar measure as this.
Uh, but they did have a joint resolution to, I guess, to, to come to an agreement, uh, to, to finalize a bill. But I, I think that would be in the next session. I think something was proposed about in two thousand twenty-three or twenty-four, uh, that, uh, had some obstacles because of the synthetic and the, and the natural, uh, components. But, um, so I, I think they've come back to the table and so I think that's something that will be in this next session.
Have you seen much of it here locally in West Tennessee?
Yeah, we have seen some things. I've, I've been notified the same thing that you, you've seen posted on social media where they are, they are. Uh, it's, it's type, uh, kind of like the, the vaping, um, that those are marketed as well to, to teenagers. Uh, a lot of the vaping products, uh, obviously you have to be twenty-one to, to possess those and use those. But, uh, they also are, uh, marketing, uh, you know, different colors of packaging and stuff for, for youth, so.
Are we having any additional questions, discussion on the amendment to placing their synthetic kratom as opposed to just kratom? All right, we're voting on the amendment, council please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right, so now we're back to the original motion with the amendment, discussion on that? Council please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
All right. Moving on to item six, consideration of a contract with Work Care Resources for Occupational Medicine Services.
So moved.
Motion.
Second.
Second, discussion? Council please vote.
Motion, motion passed eight to zero.
Item seven is consideration of a resolution approved in solidated annual performance and evaluation report, the CAPA report from two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Council please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item eight is consideration of approval for JTA purchase pursuant to T dot five, three, three, nine grant.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Council please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Item nine is consideration of committee and board appointments. Is the Ned McWhorter West Tennessee Cultural Arts Center appointment of Julie Cook to fill the unexpired term of Wanda Stanford?
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Council please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Housing Commission, appointment of Lauren Kirk.
Lo, uh, so moved.
Motion.
Second.
Your second, all right, any discussion? Council please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
The Jackson Transit Authority Board of Directors, appointment of Charles Rolfing and reappointment of Kelly Boyd.
Motion.
Here's a motion.
Second.
Second, discussion? Council please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Move on to Budget Committee, sorry, appointment of Paul Taylor.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, discussion? Council please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
Budget amendments less than ten thousand sunshine, consideration of invoices over ten thousand.
So moved.
Motion. Is there a second? Second, second, all right, now a question.
I have a question and I got to apologize to Nathan, I told him I wouldn't do this, so I'll address this to Ron, Nathan. Uh, the same question we had, we've got here of about eight police cars, three hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars. Where's that money coming from?
Those purchase orders were issued in fiscal year twenty-five. I'm sure they fully expected those to be delivered in fiscal year twenty-five. They were not, um, they, there were adequate funds in the fiscal year twenty-five capital budget to pay for those. Um, it is also part of the proposed bond package that you guys are going to consider. Um, ultimately that money will be replaced, uh, by the, uh, the bond funds.
So, but, but this should have been a budget amendment.
Yes, sir, and you're going to get a giant budget amendment when we, when we get those bond monies in.
What, when you get what in?
When you get your bond funds, yeah.
That's not been approved yet.
No, sir, but.
So I don't think we can bet on something that hadn't been approved.
Right, uh, the other thing is, and you and I discussed this, I mean, this is, um, the new purchasing controls that we have in place, uh, have already, uh, prevented a couple of other purchases that were along these lines. Um, it's, it's not something that could happen at this point in our, in our process. Um, and so I'm.
Okay, well, I beat up on you enough, I apologize on that, so, so thank you. So, but the last question, we won't have any more of these this year.
Not that I am aware of, sir.
Further discussion?
Thank you for what you're doing, Nathan.
Council please vote.
Motion passed eight to zero.
No further business coming for the council, meeting is adjourned.